Welcome to our village board meeting. Let's rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to all.
Are you turning that down? It's hot here.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we get into our agenda, we'll do a public comment on agenda items. Robin, you have it? This is up there.
To be taken tonight for the senior housing zoning. No matter which way you vote, I just hope you take in consideration about that one lot that's being subdivided out closest to the bank, since we do not know what they plan on building in there. And being that they want to put the senior housing on the other side of this property, that one particular zoning, zoning, I think should stay as, as it is, since we don't know what they plan on doing with it. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter. Mr. Kadajer.
No, I have another one, but that is a candidate.
Okay. And you'll do that on her comment, public comment. Rob, Mickey? Okay, let's move on to administrative business. I need a motion to accept the receipt of minutes of the meeting held for the 25th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I read the abstract, please?
Abstract nineteen contains vouchers nineteen fifteen seventy-six. They're nineteen sixteen ninety-two and totals one hundred thousand eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Can I get a motion for that abstract, please?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye as well. So I'd like to just state that several written comments were received during the period that we've accepted. A written comment on introductory local law number five, as well as a great number of comments that were negative in nature. There were a couple of neutral and or positive comments as well. Due to the overwhelming number of negative comments, I'd like to offer the following motion. That the Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodbury no longer entertain the Highland Mill Centers Group LLC and Lakeside Affiliates LLC petition at this time. Can I get a second on that?
I'll get, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, moving on. Acceptance of auction results of surplus equipment. I trust everyone's had an opportunity to review the auction results. The auction closed at eight P M. on March eleventh, and there were many items on that auction, because we're not going to go through them unless anybody feels the need to. Can I get a motion to accept the auction results? I see the sound.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, new business. We need to schedule a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one for the preliminary project. We'll schedule it on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty seven, for the agenda of the comments on the fiscal year twenty twenty, so I can get a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to adopt a resolution to, excuse me, grant authority to the State of New York to construct landscape in New York U thirty-two. This is outside the Woodbury Common and One Thirty-One Project over there, the areas where there's dirt and trees and future green growth. So I get a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacomaza?
Aye.
Did I get it right that time? Mayor Hagan?
Aye.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second to authorize the village clerk to advertise for upcoming, for upcoming expiring terms on the planning board and its underboard of appeals. A letter of interest will be due by close of business on April third, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Next is introduction of local law zoning, zone change request received. This is to introduce introductory law, local law number two of twenty twenty, which will end chapter three ten of the village code entitled zoning, to clarify and modify the procedure for amendments to zoning code and zoning map. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Need a motion and a second to refer introductory local law number two of twenty twenty to the Woodbury Planning Board for comments, and also to the Kami alarm for sending the general municipal law two thirty-nine and.
I'll make that motion.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Also need a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on April twenty-third, twenty twenty at seven thirty P M. to entertain public comments on introductory local law number two of twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just want to note that Attorney Rick Golden has advised the Board of Trustees that no secret actions required for this introductory local law. Next is an introduction of local law zoning and minor subdivisions. This is to introduce introductory local law number three of twenty twenty, which will end chapter two seventy-two of the village code entitled subdivision of land, to update the procedure for the review of minor subdivisions. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held also on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty at seven thirty P M. to entertain public comments on introductory local law number three of twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And again, Attorney Rick Golden has advised the Board of Trustees that no secret actions or files are required for this introductory local law. So we have an extra item added to the agenda. We need to schedule a public hearing for the introductory local law to repeal local law number one of twenty twenty. This is to introduce local law number four of twenty twenty, which repeal adopted local law number one of twenty twenty, entitled a local law to override the tax legislative establishment, general municipal law two C., which was previously adopted on February twenty-seventh, two C.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also need a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on March twenty-sixth at seven thirty P M. to entertain public comments on introductory local law number two of twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that actually concludes the regular business. We had a relative brief agenda this evening, because later on, we're going to have a discussion of zone issues and concerns with the plan and work session. Who is not here yet, but at this point, we're going to have a public comment, so. Mrs. Glass, you have it? Mr. Smith? Mrs. Hunter? Mr. Kadajer?
Mr. Kadajer, I have a question. But I asked at the previous report meeting, but my question is, in the event of this serious pandemic, the virus outbreak in Woodbury, that affects the village of Woodbury's public services, is there a plan and will that plan be made?
Plan for what exactly? How are we going to handle the pandemic?
If all the effects, sorry, if all the beneficial and services could be high way.
So, so what I can tell you is that I've had numerous conference calls with the Orange County Health Commissioner. I had an email correspondent over this morning, as a matter of fact, and I've been on conference calls with county execs and other municipal theaters. The general plan will be to follow the advice of the Health Commissioner with regard to quarantines or anything of that nature. The specific advice that I can offer, based on my expertise, as well as what we've been told by the Health Commissioner and by the CDC, by the State Department of Health, and by other government officials, is to wash your hands and the water. Soap and water is the most effective way in which you can defeat this virus. Antibacterial hand gel also works, but not nearly as effective as regular plain old soap and water. So wash your hands, very often than you have before, if you haven't been. The second thing, you know, there's some differences between this virus and the flu and other illnesses.
Too much?
In particular, the coronavirus, there's really only three primary symptoms, and that's coughing, sneezing, and or fever, one hundred point four or above. So if you have those symptoms, you stay home, don't go to school, get in work, don't go shopping, isolate yourselves from family members, any pets, because the pets can transfer it to other diseases. The flu has other additional symptoms, and anybody in the room that's had the flu in the past knows that there are a whole lot more symptoms than just the flu. So, so really, that's about it. You know, there's, we don't really have any other additional guidance that I'm aware of, and there's a lot of stuff out there. You see a lot of stuff on social media. Try not to get your news from social media, whether you're getting this or anything else. You know, you want to get your, you want to get sourced facts with regard to healthcare. So pay attention to the CDC, pay attention to the Orange County Department of Health, and pay attention to the New York State Department of Health. On the village Facebook page, there's information with regard to CDC links that have been put up by the Deputy Mayor, and, you know, follow the advice, as I said, of the CDC. That's really the best that I can tell you. As far as local stuff is concerned, like I said, we're going to follow the advice of the Health Commissioner, and whatever new regulations or policies are put forth as far as respect and affairs. Is that all?
Um, I think that's good, and was on top of it, and the order of the piece, that information gets out there. My second question is, you know, what's happening in Westchester, if you mentioned that. That's my worst idea, and I haven't done the site yet, but, you know, that was my second concern. No, it doesn't.
You know, you know, our, our thoughts are very with everybody that's affected, and we're really hoping that we don't have to face similar situations, but, you know.
Sorry about that. Um, just wanted to remind the village board and the residents of Woodbury, so if this gets out. On March thirty-first, between six and eight P M. at the senior center, the town board is going to be presenting for the first time to everybody, so we all are the same age, wait running for the engineers about the new pool presentations, and so we're going to start. That's the evening one, and then the daytime one is April fourth, which is Saturday from ten to twelve at the community center at Professor Lawrence. So I strongly urge all residents, come out. I haven't even seen the redesign, but I know the board has been working on it, and they're down the redesign now instead of four. So come out, we'll all learn at the same time together what they propose, what the cost will be, and unfortunately, the pool will not be open this year. I mean, it's regurgitating, but they are working on the reservoir, and I know they are releasing, lowering the water level, because I don't need home, because the water runs past my house. And they're working on it, they're pulling the stand up, they're cleaning it, and they're expanding the reservoir. So I think it's very important everyone to start gathering the water in the summer, so just go ahead. Keep doing the work, and the residents know that. Come on out, look at the plans, and I think it's, still the plan, I'm pretty interested.
Thank you. Rob, you have it? Mickey? The only other thing I wanted to add, in addition to the comments that I've already made, is that, you know, I'm very happy to say that, you know, we were able to keep under the tax cap. Our budget process is pretty much done. As you heard earlier, we scheduled a public hearing until later in the month for our next meeting, as a matter of fact, in two weeks. And we were able to keep under that tax cap, which was our goal, one of our many goals, but our goal to be respectful, to be fiscally responsible, and to keep under the tax cap. So we were very happy to say that we were able to do that. And obviously, the budget's out there, and more to come on that, as we have our public hearing on the budget at our next meeting. Trustee Graziano?
Uh, yes, hi. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and, you know, just kind of a quick thought process of look what's going on around in the world, and, you know, keep everybody close, and keep everybody safe that's next to you. I mean, if you look at what's going on in Italy, and China, and some of the other sections of the world, it kind of gives you a new perspective on, you know, what's important in life, and, you know, so go home, hug a loved one, stay close to your children, keep everybody safe, and kind of just ride this out, and don't panic. That's the biggest, you know, piece of advice I can offer everybody, is just don't panic. We'll get through this. I assume the numbers are going to go up. I'm sure the numbers will go up much higher than they are now, before they go back down again. But, like I said, make sure you just kind of take care of one another out there. You know, we're seeing a lot of things where people are running out of stores with forty-seven packs of toilet paper. It's not necessary. Think of your neighbor, your fellow human being. Come out, you got, we got to share a little bit, so we can all kind of get through this together. So kind of think of your fellow person, and work together, and if we can do that, I think we can accomplish beating any virus that nature throws at us. So thank you again for coming out tonight.
May I ask you that? Trustee Gomez?
On the same note, I was shopping with my wife, and all Walmart, Target, all of them, all the paper toilet was gone, toilet paper's gone. When, there's seven people in my family, man, I need those toilet papers. You know, we run out quick, so just please, that's true. And the hand papers, the hand towels were the next thing. The hand towels were gone too, I was like, man, I can't use nothing. But the point is, let's please, let's not panic, stay, stay healthy, wash your hands, soap and water, make sure your children do that. Very first thing my children do, once they get off that bus, which is a petri of nothing but every kind of thing you can find. It's, they run right into the bathroom, wash their hands, make sure they don't touch anything else, we lice all the book bags down. It's, it can be run rapid easily. We went from no cases to almost ridiculous numbers, but it's not so high where everyone needs to panic, and take every freaking toilet paper there is. But thank you all for coming out, braving the elements, and coming out and joining us, and stay safe, everyone, and healthy.
Thank you, Trustee Bier.
I'm a cautionary tale type of person, so just want to, in regards to everything going on with the news about coronavirus and COVID nineteen, I just recently learned today that there are increased cybersecurity attacks around people receiving text messages and emails containing links with information, claiming to be from trusted sources, such as the CDC or the World Health Organization, using keywords such as important CDC coronavirus information, or interactive map, and see where the outbreaks are. And many of these turn out to be elaborate phishing scams, and you click on the link, and malware will infect your system. That's actually happened to someone I know today, and it's, it's, ransomware gets installed. It's, it's really very unfortunate that, you know, the opportunists, the opportunists come out of the woodwork and exploit people's fears for their own personal gain in times like this. So to CJ's point, you know, you should be taking care of one another, not trying to, you know, steal from one another. So as with everything coronavirus related, please just exercise caution and remain vigilant. And just technologically speaking, you know, a lot of people are going to be working from home over the next, you know, to the extent that they can, over the next several weeks, and this is why I think this is happening, is they know that, you know, more people are not, are going to be hands on computers. So just, just be aware that that's out there. That's one point I wanted to make. And the second was, March is International Women's Month and Women's History Month. This past Sunday, March eighth, was International Women's Day, where men and women across the United States and the world took the time to honor the accomplishments and contributions of women in their lives. Throughout the month, and particularly last Sunday, we like to celebrate the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women, and it's a day to raise awareness for women's equality across many fields. Today, more than ever, governments and companies across the globe are paying more attention to gender equality, and political positions are, you know, more and more being held by women. However, we still only hold twenty-five percent of the political positions in this country. Whatever your perspective is, just understand having a diverse perspective will always make you better, and it can be beneficial to everyone. And, you know, your boards and your people representing your community should really be representative of the population for what you represent. So with that, more women should stand up and lean in, get involved in impactful community affairs. And I have hope that we are on the right track, especially here in Woodbury, and I just hope to see more of it. So for those of you here, and those of you watching, men and women alike, please take a minute to celebrate and recognize those women in your life, who have made some kind of meaningful impact on you. It motivates and inspires us to keep going and to forge positive change. So thank you for everyone who's reached out to me, and for those of you with siblings, or wives, and spouses, sisters, and just please, make sure you tell them how much they mean and what they do for this community, and it really goes a long way. So thank you very much. Thank you.
There you go. No, I thought she, she does okay, and, and we're not grading, we don't, we're not doing a grading system on that. I had the opportunity, as things are getting canceled all over the place, to, and I say that because I believe the St. Patrick's Dinner Dance at St. Patrick's will be canceled. I think that announcement will be made tomorrow. In the meantime, I spoke with representatives in the New York Blood, Blood Center, and this blood drive that we are sponsoring here in the Village of Woodbury, they are in desperate need of blood supplies. COVID nineteen or coronavirus has really played havoc with blood donations. Anybody who has donated blood before knows that their environment is usually very sterile to begin with. But she assures me they are taking extra precautions because of the fears with COVID nineteen, but they are desperate for blood donations. So we are going to make as big of a push as we possibly can to get donors. If you go to the Village of Woodbury page, or the Jacomaza Gomez page, you will see an actual link to the blood drive, where you can actually just click on it and pick your time that you would like to donate. So I urge everybody, the thirteen or fourteen people who are actually going to watch this video, to spread the word. Signs are up all over the place throughout Woodbury. Please, spread the word about the blood drive, they are in desperate need. On another note. Oh, oh, well, it's everywhere, but anyway, it is our first ever spring blood drive in memory of Michael Hansen. For those who did not know Michael, it's unfortunate that you didn't, because he really was a gentleman amongst gentlemen. Very good soul, a guy who donated a lot of time to this community, and outside his family, to help others. So we are doing this blood drive in his honor on Saturday, March twenty-first, here at the Village Hall, from nine A M. to three P M. So you have plenty of time, eat, have a good meal, take a nap, and then you can donate blood here, so. By all means, please, just spread the word. In the meantime, the other point I would like to make, or the other statement I would like to make, and I did not write it down. Those who know me know that since, even before I ran for election, I've been very protective of the job I was running for. I made it a point that when Jesus and I were running, when it was easy for people to say that, you know, Neil Kraus, or Buddy Micelijic, or anybody else who was currently on the board was, you know, running amok here in, in the Village of Woodbury, and there were problems with the Village of Woodbury and, and everything else like that. And I made it a point to say, no, there's not a problem with the Village of Woodbury. The biggest problem we have is that we'd be losing a man like Neil Kraus, and a man like Buddy Micelijic from the board. So since that day, I think I've been very, I've been very protective, or been the first, or tried to be the first to step up and say, hey, you're wrong. And that, and that doesn't go just for board members, that, that goes for employees, that goes for volunteers, that goes for stipend members of our boards and whatnot. I bring this up because recently, it was brought to my attention that there is an individual going around Woodbury stating, stating some wrongdoings that were done by previous board members here, and also by one of our current employees. There is no proof of any of that, nor will I accept that rumor being spread. There's more than enough discord in Woodbury without lies and accusations being thrown out there with no basis for proof. I will be bringing it up to my other board members, what I've heard, and I will be looking to seek legal action against these individuals, because, or individual, because I just will not accept it. These are very strong accusations of wrongdoing. And quite honestly, if there is no proof to that, then it's, it's just wrong. It's wrong to do to these people, because they're people I know personally, I respect, and I just can't have it. I won't have it. So it'll be something we will talk about during our nearest attorney-client meeting, but it will be something that I will be addressing further, and I will be dealing with the individual involved. So I, I don't want to go into it any further, but that, those type of accusations, I take seriously. Okay, there are other things that have been going on lately that are also without any basis, but they're not to the extent of these accusations. So once again, I will talk to my board members about it, but I need the people that work for the Village of Woodbury to know that I and the rest of this board have their back. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, with no further comments to be brought forth, the same time motion and a second to. Oh, excuse me.
Is it about the treks? Is it about the treks?
I mean, it's hard to follow that, because, you know, it's like a cliffhanger during May sweeps. But I'm super excited to announce we've collected over a hundred pounds of plastic. So that means we're a little over a fifth of the way through to getting our bench. So please continue to donate your plastic to the Lions Club in the collection bins that are throughout town. It's been all over Facebook, there's a bin at my office at Town Hall, there's a bin at our office here. I believe there's one at Jay's Deli, I believe there's one at Aldi's, although it's getting more than plastic, I hear. It's getting coffee cups and stuff, that doesn't count. But it's very exciting that we have over a hundred pounds so far, so that is pretty good. And then, of course, the Lions Club is also selling the chocolate bunnies for that time of year, for those that celebrate or just like chocolate. They are five dollars each, or three for fifteen dollars, and they come in dark and milk chocolate.
You ready?
Yes.
Keep you healthy.
You were selling them last year. Well, you were out there, you were looking to sell them out there.
Okay, okay, so now, we have over, uh, can I get a second to adjourn?
I'll make.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Screen details.
What? Mr. Smith?
Oh, he took the words out of Rob's mouth.
Straight there. Poor man wants his copy, man. We don't need these, right?
We don't need these, right?
We could leave our bags, right?
So what Valerie's going to do is review the general concepts of a comprehensive plan, what it is, and get some, get into some specifics about ours, and then generally have a discussion with us as a board as to how this works, how it inter aligns with our village code and our village board meetings, and how we go about doing things and changing things if we so desire. Is that about right, Val?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Valerie. Thank you.
So thank you, first of all, having you come tonight. So I feel like to people, this would be, your current code was originally written in 2011, that was the year that it was adopted. And there was, as you know, some events that were done in 2019. Typically, a community will look at updating its comprehensive plan every 10, 15 years, mostly especially when you have communities that have gone through changes, or there's specific areas that you want to focus certain development on, or if you find that they're...
You pull the mic a little closer.
Sorry.
Yeah, there you go. That's actually working.
Is it on?
No, it's not.
Is it green?
Yep. No, it's not. There's a little button, small one, underneath the big one here.
All right. So what I was saying is that typically, a community will look to undertake a new comprehensive plan process if for some reason the current climate or current conditions are really not cohesive with what was originally in the comprehensive plan. Other times, communities might want to look at a comprehensive plan again if they feel that there's certain areas they really want to focus development, or actually want to preserve or conserve, and so those will also be looked at in the comprehensive plan update. You can also do comprehensive plan amendments, which is what the, what this board undertook back in 2019, when you went and undertook the comprehensive plan amendments for the hotel overlay. So sometimes it might just be a little piece of the comprehensive plan that you want to adjust, and not necessarily the whole entire plan. Basically, either way, the, if you do comprehensive plan amendment adoption, as you know, you've already been through that process, it's identifying what the, what the changes are that we need to be instituted, and then you would go in and draft the amendment to that comprehensive plan, and then you have a public hearing on it, and you have to undertake a seeker. Typically, when you update a comprehensive plan, you tend to also update zoning codes, because that's really your implementation strategy for bringing forth the goals and recommendations within a comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan now has about five major themes. The first was dealing with maintaining Woodbury's character, creating gathering spaces. Another major theme was caring for changing population, promoting economic development and diversity, and protecting your natural resources. I think to a larger extent, the comprehensive plan that you have now focused on, you know, your revitalization of your Hamlet areas, also talked about the transit-oriented development districts, and then it also talked about promoting, you know, some of your more economic development areas, and really promoting your economic development resources, which you have undertaken over the years. So I'm here tonight to talk to you a little, you know, to get your thoughts on some concerns that you have with, you know, the zoning or with land use, and then just to talk to you a little bit about some of the options or avenues you can undertake.
Great. I think Tara should go first, because Tara's been speaking openly about the desire to, not necessarily amend the comprehensive plan, but have all kinds of new...
Well, I'm more interested in the land trust.
Yeah, land trust, exactly. And I think that would be part of it, so Tara, please.
So what can you tell us about that, and what you've seen in other communities?
Well, I mean, you have, I mean, you can develop a land trust. I mean, there's...
I know, that's not particularly, the mechanics of it are not your area, but how effective has it been?
Well, I mean, the city of Kingston is about to implement. It's, it's a lot of work, I will tell you that. I know Newburgh has a very successful land banking program, but that has been something that has been a really big focus of Newburgh over many years. When they're done correctly, and when they're done with the resources that are needed, they are, they can be very successful.
Would you mind explaining what that actually means? Reviewing the nuts and bolts of that briefly?
Sure. All right. So, so basically, a land trust will, or, you know, a land bank, it'll be an organization that buys up properties, then will hold those properties and...
Can I stop you? We're looking at more of something called a community preservation plan?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was not clear. Where you, on every sale of a home, there's a portion of it that the seller pays in order to, you know, whoever's implementing the community preservation plan, whether it's the town or the village.
Right.
Require all kinds of approvals from New York State, so it's not something we can do on our own.
Right.
But in terms of us banking enough money to buy, if there's a 100-acre parcel of land that we want to preserve and make it forever green, forever park, whatever, that's where I'm going with it.
Okay.
So not so much an organization doing it, but our, us ourselves.
Yes, yes. So, okay, so that's a little bit different. So the land trusts that I'm thinking of are ones that are actually taking land that's, you know, available, and then turning it back into the, onto the market for redevelopment of like new housing. So in terms of actually preservation, so that can also be done as well, and that sometimes is a goal of the community, where they'll, they will do, just as you said, they will put funds aside through either of those types of mechanisms or other mechanisms, and then ultimately, they will look to buy pieces of property as they become available, especially when you identify particular areas that you really want to focus.
Right. Because I feel like we have a lot of commercial in Woodbury, and not enough of this, and I think the balance, as you said, as you started with preserving the character of Woodbury.
Right.
That's part of the character, and I feel like that's what we're lacking right now. So I know it's a lot of work, but I think it's, needs to be done.
Right. I think one of the things that you might want to look at is trying to figure out, you know, and you can also look in the comprehensive plan to see if there's anything there, but where, particularly in Woodbury, would you be interested in really looking to buy up some of the properties?
Well, that's what we have to, that's part of, is that like first step?
That would be the first step, is really trying to...
Identifying the parcels of land, and then working towards...
Right.
Raising the funds to acquire it.
Right. I mean, because sometimes you'll find that, you know, depending on the market, and some properties can be...
Oh, yeah. No, 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 I know, that's a huge obstacle for us, but I think it's worth exploring.
I think identifying where, within the community, do you want to preserve.
Okay.
I mean, because that, there could also be other mechanisms that you could promote if, for example, if a particular property is up for development, asking for certain easements and stuff associated with maybe part of the land that would abut maybe other areas or other properties that you were interested in picking up. So it can be like more than one strategy at any point in time in order to try to preserve certain areas.
So would that work like an overlay district, or would that be targeting specific zones within the village?
Well, I mean, I think, I think first is trying to figure out, right.
Trying to get to, yeah.
Yeah, I think the first step is trying to figure out where in the community you're looking to preserve, and then trying to figure out, are there, like, for example, are a few of them larger lots? Could they potentially have, you know, be a nice example for a cluster development, and then you have, you know, conservation easements or land dedication? And then maybe then, maybe they happen to abut other properties that you could also pick up in the meantime? Because some, a lot of these times with even like larger land trusts that specifically look to preserve open space, it's piecemeal as they, you know, tackle their...
No, I would rather chop, bait, I mean, find the largest chunk and figure out how to get it and do something nice with it, not...
Right. I would think we can also look for conservation easements on developments.
For the water.
Not even for that. I mean, if you, if somebody comes in and develops a larger parcel of land, you can, part of that requirement could be to take a certain section of that, not develop at all, and create a conservation easement, which basically sterilizes that piece of land forever green.
Right.
And I think that's another option that we can really, we should take in kind of our overall planning and looking...
So, in addition to what I'm saying, or...
Yeah.
Right, because you can have more than one mechanism, yeah.
Well, we have something similar at the top of WP3, don't we? Where we have that green belt around it between the village and adjacent...
Right. And some of it can also be, you know, a part of it is sometimes, you know, depending on the project, and depending on what, you know, sometimes it can be even just incentives as part of, you know, a zoning district. It could be like a slight density bonus you get for preserving so much piece of property, or, you know, and sometimes developers then are even more willing to carve out those areas.
Thank you.
Don't mind me, I'm answering a text.
About this, very topic?
No. So we'll keep going while he's texting. Couple of things. One, the constant, this existing plan is close to a decade old now. And that's kind of right in the wheelhouse of where you just said, you know, then 10 to 15-year range where you can kind of need to start taking a look at it anyway, and that's kind of something that I've been thinking about for a while now, you know, as I've been going through, running for this office and thinking about things that we're doing. And that's one of the things I really kind of think we should start with, is some sort of a review committee to kind of look at it. It doesn't mean we have to change it, but I think we really need to start bringing a community of people together from diverse backgrounds, from different places. You know, you got to have some small business people, some large business people, some regular residents, something of that ilk, where you can get a really diverse perspective of what is the, you know, the vision 10 years ago could be different from the vision now that we want for the next 10 years.
Right.
So I think it's time to kind of put something like that together, and I think that would be the right first step. So would you agree with that?
Yes, I would. And that was one of the things that I was going to say. The first thing is to try to actually determine whether you actually need a new comprehensive plan or not. I mean, that's something that I could, you know, work with a review committee to kind of walk through the various pieces or elements of the comprehensive plan and sort of identify, does it, is it still, you know, applicable to today's environment, or do certain things need to be tweaked? Because again, at the end of the day, if you don't have a large, if you don't need to overhaul the whole comprehensive plan and just identify some amendments to it, that clearly is always a little bit more efficient and a little bit less cost than actually doing a whole new comprehensive plan. But if you start finding that almost every chapter in the comprehensive plan has a lot of, you know, amendments that are needed, then at that point, it might be worth looking for, you know, to undertake a new comprehensive plan.
But are we held, we're not held to it?
Nope.
If we have a committee and they suggest do X, Y, and Z, we as a board don't have to do X, Y, and Z.
No, you don't.
But what are the repercussions if you don't?
There are no repercussions. I mean, I think, I think one of the things you would want to do, again, you know, depending upon what the committee came out, like, let's say, for example, the committee finds, well, let's go back to the open space, says, we need an open space plan, we need to know what we want to do and where we want to focus our efforts. So you can actually develop an open space plan if you decide not to do like a new comprehensive plan.
An upheaval of that, we can, okay.
Right. And then a piece of it, right, in addition to it.
So Section 6 would be an open space plan.
Exactly.
What would the nuts and bolts of creating that committee look like?
So I would advise definitely trying to bring in some of the land use boards, because they would be definitely ones to identify whether there's different zoning change, you know?
So let me, let me rephrase that then. I would assume that they would be representatives of the village board, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals.
Yes, exactly. Right.
Perhaps the town board, this, you know, as Chris said, you know, members of the business community, residential community, et cetera.
Exactly, some stakeholders.
But I was looking for a number of people.
Oh, I would say, I would say no more...
This would go through legal, I would imagine, then.
Well, I would say probably no more than about 10 or 12 at that point, it gets a little bit...
Too many opinions.
I totally agree on the size of, I think even that's too many people.
Right. Well, I think you'll find that when you start adding up, like, let's say you have one or two, you know, village board members, one or two planning board, zoning board, you know, my, you know, next thing you know...
It's only people who are in village government.
You have a claw on very quickly, yeah.
And I would kind of ask that, would your advice be, because my look at this would be, I get definitely a planning board member and a zoning board member, but I would think the village board, us, would be away from that process, because we would, you know, rather than influence the end of what we're going to decide if we're going to go forward or not. Separation of church and state. Exactly. I think that would be a better idea for us to stay away from that, and let the committee do what the committee does.
Right. I mean, you can, you can do that, or you could have maybe one representative, just so that they can sort of maybe advise a little bit on your thoughts on, you know, certain issues. I think it's also helpful sometimes, because they can also be liaison back to this larger group as to maybe some of the concerns or things that are coming up. So, you know, I mean, it is possible to not have any representation there, but typically, there will usually be one person sort of acting as a liaison, but doesn't necessarily have to weigh in on every conversation.
I think there could be more of a steering, if you see it going off track in like something that's not attainable.
Well, or if it's...
Okay, let's bring it back.
Right. Or let's say it's going in a, in a position or... Right. Or let's say it's going in a position or a direction that you know, you're not, they're not going to get support from the village board.
Or the community at large.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
So, then that's probably something worth raising at that point.
I just, I understand CJ's point. I think he, we don't want to influence their thoughts.
Right.
Because we really want to see what they want.
Right.
Rather than our, you know, we can sit here all day telling you what we want, but the point of it is to see what the community wants.
Fresh eyes.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Fresh eyes, yeah.
If we take a look at this and say, there's too many changes, can we go without one instead and just strengthen our codes and go without it?
I think where he's going was where I was going to basically go, is if the idea has been floated, do we really need a comp plan?
Right. So...
You're talking to a planner. You realize this?
There are, there are technically, you know, there are, there are absolutes. So, you don't necessarily have to have a comprehensive plan. However, whatever zoning changes you decide to implement need to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So...
If you have one.
If you have one. Because you have one, right? And, and the other thing too is if you don't have a comprehensive, I mean, your lawyers would be able to give you lots of case studies on this, but if you, if a community doesn't have a comprehensive plan, and then somebody takes it to like a particular project or a law to court, then they'll start taking a look at your zoning and everything else that you have, and sort of formulate that as your basis for your land use decisions, and why you're going in particular directions one way or the other. So, it is always better to have a comprehensive plan, but do you absolutely need to update it, you know, as often as every 10 years? Not necessarily. Especially as I said before, if the zoning changes or things that you want to implement aren't inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, then you could keep the comprehensive plan and then just bring in those other studies, like, for example, an open space plan, or even zoning changes that would, that are supported by the basis of your comprehensive plan. I mean, I've looked at your comprehensive plan before, and, you know, it's very, you know, there's a lot of broad stuff in the comprehensive plan, so to some extent, there are probably certain zoning changes that you're looking to do that could be supported by what's already existing in your comprehensive plan.
Because it's broad?
Because to some extent, it is broad, and I think to some extent, you, my guess is based on what I know of the village, that you would be looking to enhance some of these elements that are already there in the plan.
My concern with broad is that it's open to whoever's interpretation, not necessarily ours.
And, well, I think...
I understand what you're saying.
You know, like, for example, like, you know, there's a sentence here, "The town and village recognizes that its remaining large open spaces are disappearing. This loss will be permanent unless there's some sort of intervention," right? So, if you came up with, you know, the concept that you're coming up with, or an open space plan, that technically is supported by this general concept of protecting your natural resources.
And it's based on the code that's underlying the comprehensive?
Right. Exactly. If, if for some reason you really wanted to go in a very opposite direction, not that you're going that, but if you wanted to go in an opposite direction because of other situations that are occurring, like, let's say you had too much open space and you really needed
The development.
the development, then you might want to revise that section of the comprehensive plan to sort of really bring that reasoning why you're going to go in that opposite direction.
Well, the reason why I brought it up.
Okay.
Because it was floated, the idea was floated to us, maybe that we should be considering an elimination of the comp plan, which I understand that you're a planner, but eliminating it and then you're strengthening on codes, which is actually what we started tonight with the code, but...
Yeah, but those code changes are in alignment with the plan.
So, your feeling is...
Right. I would not remove your comprehensive plan, because I do think there is a really strong framework, and really, you don't want, like I said, it puts a situation where like then the courts go in and decide based upon what you already have in existence.
What the vision is, yeah.
What they think your ultimate, you know, view is, or how your vision is for that community, where the comprehensive plan really lays it out. So, it is important document.
Well, based on what you've reviewed of our comp plan, what you see is an area of need for us, what we should be concentrating on, what we could be looking at, what could be strengthening, what could we be, what can we be doing?
Well, I think, I think actually, the exercise that you brought up, I think, is really important. I think it's important for people to go through the comprehensive plan and read the recommendations and read the goals, and really decide if these are applicable to what's taking place today. And then I believe that as you go through the comprehensive plan, or you have a committee that goes through the comprehensive plan, they'll start identifying other items that, you know, oh, yeah, this, this does bring up this really good issue, but we haven't really addressed this. So, maybe that's something that all of a sudden becomes, we need to address this particular issue that hasn't been yet brought into either the zoning code or some additional plans or initiatives from the village.
And how does the committee go about being formed? Is there interviews? Are there letters of interest? Are there...
Typically, there's letters of interest, you know, and then you can, you can potentially interview the candidates if you'd like. I mean, that's usually...
I mean, that's heavy.
Right.
I know.
You know, you know, so usually there's a letter of interest, and then there'll be interviews, and then they'll select the candidates from there.
Can we appoint certain people? Like, if we want to appoint the chairman of the zoning board and the chairman of the planning board, just as an example?
Yes.
And we start from there, and then we're, we have eight openings or something. We can start that way.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because it's a committee.
Right.
It's not like it's a commission, so to speak, and whatnot. So, it actually should be much easier to form than anything else.
Yes. I mean, you don't have to have even interviews, you know. If you know very specific people that you'd want to bring in, you can do that as well.
I prefer to, my preference would be let the people apply and see who would be interested.
Yeah.
But I just want to know if we could appoint people, because I think somebody from planning and zoning is important.
We carve out a certain number of people that we want, and...
And then the rest is probably...
I think that combination is a good check and balance.
I agree.
I can, I can send something over that usually is like a nice, like, list that has some sort of, you know, generalized categories of, you know, stakeholders that you might want to consider.
Great. Perfect. That's what I was going to ask.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Hey, Sue, you have anything? Andrew, you have anything else?
No. No, I think I'm good.
No, it was very informative. I think that's kind of where I've been wanting to go, so it kind of, it's a, it's a good thing.
Good.
You made him smile. That's a big thing.
Well, so, um...
He's been smiling for a few days now. It's a little, it's a little weird. Scaring me a little bit.
Hold on. There you go.
There you go.
So, I think then the, probably the next steps, what I'll do is I'll send you over some information on, you know, generally to set up like a committee like that, and then we'll be...
Do you have any tips on, when you said that we have a downtown Hamlet part of the plan that I don't think has been really implemented effectively? Do you have any tips for things that we could be doing that we're not doing?
Well, I mean, there's, there's always...
Practical tips, not without, not without...
Or do you have $25 or $30 million?
Right.
Well, no. I mean, I'm saying like things that the community could...
Oh, you've got practical tips.
Grants you can apply for, or, I mean...
I think the grant writers are coming key.
Yeah, that's going to be a big help.
But shouldn't he work in conjunction with what she's seen in other communities? Like, I feel like that should be a play?
Right. I mean, you know, I, well, we've, I've also clearly written many grants over the years and stuff like that too. So, I think it really just depends on what it is. I mean, I assume the grant writer will probably know most of the certain, you know, consolidated funding application process and stuff like that. So, it really comes down to, I would say, the key thing with, with any of these grants though with the state is really having as much shovel-ready projects as possible, or, you know, they like to see, maybe, for example, you start off with a study, and then after the study, then you're going to implement a piece, and then after that, you implement the next piece.
Who does the study? Would it be a you thing, or would it be an us thing?
Well, I mean, it depends on whatever, whatever the study is.
It would be driven by professional planners, I would think.
Right.
I mean, I watched the city of New Rochelle get a $10 million downtown revitalization grant.
Yeah, I actually worked on that project.
So, I can ask Noel, the mayor.
We just need a fraction of that.
To give us any of the information.
She worked on it.
Oh, you worked on it too?
Well, I worked, yeah, I actually wrote, I wrote the, for Staten Island, I wrote the, helped write these, their downtown revitalization initiative grant, which they ended up winning $10 million. And I actually worked on the project as the planning consultants for both the New Rochelle and the city of Kingston project. So, they, with the downtown revitalization initiatives, most of the communities that actually do win the $10 million have had a number of key plans put in place, and, and they've, and they focus on an area that is, it's not necessarily an area that needs like millions and millions of dollars, but $10 million will really give it a good shot in the arm. So, it's not the most economically distressed area, but it's more of an area that it's almost ready to pop.
It could truly benefit.
Oh, we could, right. We could total, yeah.
That's exactly what I'm thinking, yeah.
So, I mean, so that, you know, even the New Rochelle one was not their, their downtown, which was really...
No.
It was right, it was right outside that area, you know, and the city of Kingston was their uptown area. So, you know, as opposed to their stockade district or some of their other districts.
That's why we need a good stockade. All right. Anybody else have any questions for Valerie? All right.
Just if you can get us the framework of starting this committee, that would be perfect.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, she's going to do that, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie.
Nice to meet you. Yes, very nice to meet you too.
You'll be hearing from us frequently.